Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin, please turn off your cellphones or use the silent feature. Please note that today's hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube as part of a six-month pilot project. Welcome. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustments of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for minor variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw, permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to create new laws. Hearing procedure. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if any one other than the agent or the applicant is present in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared from the agenda. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside of the hearing room in an effort to resolve concerns of issues. If no person is present in interest, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Making your submissions. Each speaker, including the agent or the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and file a decision request card so that we have correct information for our records. If you have a written submission that you read from, please hand it in to the Deputy Secretary/Treasurer when you are done, who's seated on my right. First, the applicant or agent will make a presentation to the committee of the application as submitted. Then individuals either in interest and support or oppose the application will be allowed to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views. However, covering the same points will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their submission. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only the related items that were raised. The matter will then be taken into the committee for decision. This will mark the end of all discussion. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application only. The decision. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. The process for filing an appeal has changed recently, so please listen carefully. As of May 3rd, almost all appeals will be dealt with by a new tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeals Body, or T-Lab. For more information on the T-Lab, please visit the T-Lab or the COVA website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. In order to receive a copy of the committee's decisions and to be informed of the appeal proceedings, you must fill out the decision request card referred to earlier. Please include your email address, as the T-Lab will be sending notification appeal updates by email. Please leave your completed form with Deputy Secretary/Treasurer or member of her staff before leaving today. Decisions will be mailed within three business days. Now we will move forward with the hearing. So first, we'll confirm the minutes of the last meeting. If I could have a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move for adoption of the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion to adopt the minutes has been moved by Ms. Hayes, second by Mrs. Omen. All in favor? Are there any declarations of interest at this time, staff members and panel members?
Through you, Madam Chair, I have a declaration. Item number 11, 130 Sunnyside Avenue. I have a sibling that owns property in the 60-meter notification area.
Thank you. Do we have any, Madam Deputy Secretary, are there any files to be closed today?
Yes, Madam Chair. File number B001417TEY, A009417TEY, and A009517TEY. 93 Oriole Parkway. It's been deemed abandoned. The application was received January 27, 2017. Numerous attempts were made to schedule the application. It was finally scheduled September 27, 2017, and subsequently deferred, and the applicant has not responded to any requests to have the matter disposed of. So it would be closed with no refund.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary/Treasurer.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'll move a motion to close the files without a refund of fees. I second that.
So a motion has been moved to close these files, moved by Ms. Omen, second by Ms. Hayes. All in favor? Deferral requests. Madam Deputy Secretary/Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferrals?
I think at this point, maybe we can run through. I know there are some requests by city staff. I don't know if applicants are in favor or not in favor of those requests, but maybe we can do the vetting first and then deal with the deferral requests.
Okay, sounds good. So just one thing I wanted to remind is please note that the committee will not be entertaining extensive revisions to the proposals at the hearing today. In this instance, if you have extensive revisions, your applications will be deferred to ensure revisions are accurate and that all interested parties are informed of the changes. Are there any agents present who are not prepared to proceed today with their application as submitted or who are requesting that the hearing of the application is deferred? Yeah, so if you can come forward, please introduce yourself, your application number, and the reason you are seeking the deferral.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Jordan Kemp, agent for the application at 878 Palmerston Avenue. Just pulling up the application file number here.
Item 17. Are there any interested parties in this application today at the hearing? So if you can please come forward. Can you please select a spokesperson to just speak to specifically the deferral? But you can all come forward. We'll just need one person to... So if the applicant can present to us why you are seeking the deferral?
We've received the planning staff report recommending deferral as well as a number of letters of objection, and so we'd like to convene with planning staff before coming back to the committee for the approval.
And then if you can have one of the spokesperson introduce themselves, their address, and if you can speak, are you in favor or against the deferral?
Yeah, I'm David Nemirovsky. I live at 876 Palmerston, which is right next door to the applicant. We have no problems with the deferral. We would ask there be one condition placed on it, though, and that is that there be no occupants in the building under question between now and when it comes back to...
I have to confirm with Madam Secretary/Treasurer, but I believe it's not under jurisdiction to be able to do that.
Through you, Madam Chair. If there is concerns about how the building is being used, you can call 311 and ask to speak to Toronto Buildings or Inspections, or MLS Officer, Municipal Licensing Officer, and they'll go out and do an inspection. The committee doesn't have the authority to police...
Well, can we put it on record, though, that we... I realize you don't have the authority to actually put that in effect, but please put it on record that we did have a concern about. It's presently not dwelt in, and we'd like to ensure that it's not being dwelt in, as that may change the status. So if you could just put that on record, we'd appreciate that.
We could include it on the record as a note.
It doesn't carry any authority, but I think it does express our concern, which I think is only fair.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Committee members, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, Madam Chair. As the applicant stated, the planning staff has also made this recommendation. So I think, and the neighbors agree, perhaps there's room for dialogue to come up with something more palatable. So I think to give them the opportunity would be justified in this case, so therefore I would move deferral of the application, including recirculation fees.
Okay, so, sorry, all in favor? Okay, so application number 878 Palmerston Avenue has been deferred, including recirculation fees.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee.
Are there any other requests for deferrals? So if you could please come forward.
Hello, do you want the file number or the address?
File number preferably. Item number. Address as well.
The address, 26 Governors Road.
Okay, so number nine. Okay, so if you can introduce yourself, your address, and the reason for the deferral?
Okay, I'm Jeff Henneman. I'm one of the interested residents near the property. The applicant, after meeting with about a...
Just to stop you, right there is the applicant here. If you can please come forward. Okay, so we'll just deal with this application right now, and then we'll move to deferral after the vetting of the agenda. So if we can have the applicants introduce themselves and to speak to the request for deferral?
I'm Roy Bance of Fluid Living Studio. We're acting as agent for the owner, who's also present, David Quinter and Nadia Gabrielle.
Are you asking?
No, we're actually asking to present.
Okay, so I believe that it has to be the agent or the applicant who can seek the deferral?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's always, if a neighbor has a concern, it's always a good opportunity for them to have a conversation out in the hallway, and if they still feel that there's a deferral needed, then at least they've had that discussion, rather than hashing it out here right now.
Okay, so I think that's the best way to proceed, so we'll just step this item down. We'll vet the agenda, and then you have an opportunity to discuss any concerns. So now I'll vet the agenda. So item number one, 191 Albany Avenue, is the agent or the applicant here. Are there any interested parties in item number one? Item number two, 193 Albany Avenue, agent or applicant? Any interested parties? Item number three, 955 Greenwood Avenue, agent or applicant? Any interested parties? Item number four, 440 Kingswood Road, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number five, 550 Christie Street, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number six, 10 Castleview Avenue, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number seven, 794 Coxwell Avenue, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number eight, 11 Little York Road, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number 10, 77 Muriel Avenue, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number 11, 130 Sunnyside Avenue, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number 12, 254 Shaw Street, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number 13, 558 Concord Avenue, agent, applicant here? 558 Concord Avenue. Okay, so we'll just hold this down for now. Item number 14, 33 Fernwood Park? Agent, applicant? Just three Madam Secretaries. So we believe this item has been rescheduled. Is that correct? Okay. So never mind. So now, item number 15, 365 Bay Street, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Item number 16, 105 Hudson Drive, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? Okay, so this item will also be held down, so we advise that you meet outside and discuss any concerns. So number 17 has been already addressed. And number 18, 308 Simington Avenue, agent, applicant? Any interested parties? So right now, there is one item to be held, number nine, 26 Governors Road. And once again, item number 13, 558 Concord Avenue, is there any agent or applicant that just walked in? No? Okay, so we'll hold that item as well. Okay, so we'll proceed with item number one, 191 Albany Avenue. So if you can introduce yourself, your address, and... Yeah, we can do one and two together, so 191 and 193 Albany Avenue. Panel members, would you like a presentation? So for 191 Albany Avenue, we have a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a covering letter, as well as we have support letter from 193 Albany Avenue.
Correct. Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Roman Sup. I'm from KFA Architects and Planners. I am agent for the owner of 191 Albany Avenue, and I'm here on their behalf to request variances to the bylaws relating to main wall height, buildings setback to property line, and buildings setback to adjacent buildings with openings. This is in support of a 20-square meter addition to the third floor.
Okay. Agents, sorry, panel members, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, Madam Chair. I think it's a very straightforward application.
Okay, so would you like to put forward a motion?
If my colleague doesn't have any questions.
You're also representing the applicant on 193 as well.
Correct, yes.
Through you, Madam Chair. I feel that what's being proposed is indeed minor and fits within the character of the neighborhood and meets the four tests. Therefore, I would move approval of the application.
Both applications?
Both, yes. So 191 Albany as well as 193.
I would second that.
Okay, so a motion for approval for 191 Albany, 193 Albany. Moved by Ms. Omen, second by Ms. Hayes. All in favor? So both applications have been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, 955 Greenwood Avenue. So before we get settled, the committee has before us a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have supporting materials containing photos of existing property, renderings, and simplified site plan, received February 20th. And then we have a staff report from community planning, as well as a letter from manager right-of-way. Okay, if you can, sure. If you can just first introduce yourself, your address, and if you can tell us what the document is that you have in your hand?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Council. My name is Matthew, and I'm representing Mrs. Meeks and her family, the homeowners at 955 Greenwood Avenue. So this zoning certificate, there was a small clerical error on Mr. Carman's part where the...
Who's Mr. Carman?
He's Patrick Carman, is the zoning examiner for the project. He has written the lot coverage at 59%, when in reality it is 50%.
You missed, Madam Chair. Maybe you can just tell... So it's 50%?
It's 50%.
What is that in square meters?
50% is 92.51 square meters.
92.51?
And 10% of that is the rear deck.
Okay, so we're going to be revising then the application variance number one?
About under the old bylaw, does that change?
The old bylaw does not change. So, as you mentioned, we have a staff report, a letter of recommendation. We also campaigned the neighborhood and have a declaration of support from some neighbors. I don't know if you...
Yeah, sure, if you can bring it forward.
Sure.
So are any of the adjacent neighbors, directly adjacent neighbors, in support of the application?
Are you aware of the right-of-way management requirement?
Yes, so that was one of the points that I want to bring up. Did you want me to go through my entire presentation, or just the ones that you wanted to question me about?
Yeah, we can just address it through questions. If you can just bring us the support letters.
Yes, yes. I'm going to just dig through here. So in terms of the right-of-way, it is an existing right-of-way, but the width between two buildings is only 2.04 meters, which you can't drive a modern, today's modern cars through without scratching your cars. There is an agreement with 953, the neighbors to the south, to park in the front. So if possible, if we could request to continue parking in the front of our building. It's also shown in the rendering and in the existing photo how both neighbors currently park.
Okay, and do you have a support letter from 953? Okay, perfect.
Okay, I don't think that any agreement between the neighbor, that's not something we have jurisdiction over, as well as if it is on the right-of-way, that that is under the control of right-of-way management. So you would still have to speak to them regarding this report.
Okay, okay, that's no problem.
Do you have anything to add, Deputy?
Well, through you, Madam Chair. They are asking for a variance for no parking on the site, and that the parking space that you're referring to is on the city road allowance, I believe. I'd like to remove the area. They're asking that the, what's there now has to be removed. So you are continuing to ask for a variance for parking because you can't provide one, right?
Yes.
So through you, just to be clear, that if you allow that variance for no parking, it doesn't mean that that parking pad can stay. It's an issue between the applicant and right-of-way management, so they'll have to sort that out. I don't know if you want to... What is your answer to the provision of parking, given that the other situation is not certain?
So we're going to, I guess, request for zero parking as the variance.
Okay. But you require parking?
We do require parking, but we cannot park, we cannot drive the car back in that right-of-way, right-of lane, because it's just, the width is way too tight, and the buildings are existing. You can't move buildings.
Is street permit parking permitted there?
The thing with Greenwood is because it's such a, it's a major street, there is no street parking. Otherwise, they have to park in the neighborhoods in the back and then walk to their house. The shared neighbor is the gas station to the north, and that's their property, so they obviously cannot park in their business.
Is there any permit parking available on the neighboring streets? Have you determined that?
I have not determined that.
So you mentioned that you had support for 953. I can't see on this petition...
So, no, they never signed that, no. So he's the husband, and he could maybe speak on behalf of the...
So if you can, sorry, if you can just introduce yourself and...
My name is Balakar Jagpal. I'm the husband of the owner of the property. Just want to clarify...
955?
955 Greenwood Avenue. I just wanted to clarify the point about the parking. It's an informal agreement we have with our neighbor. It's not mandatory that we keep that parking spot. There is permit parking, I believe, on Queensdale, right next to us. So if this is a sticking point, I don't want it to be. The parking is not a major component of the application. In terms of the support letter from 953, it's a rental property. I don't see the owner very often, maybe once or twice a year. They weren't comfortable in providing a letter of support. However, verbally, they were okay with it. So I just wanted to clarify those two points.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask you to please fill out a decision request card, because we didn't get the proper spelling of your name? And perhaps maybe we can remind people to hand in their cards before they speak?
Okay, sounds good.
If it's an agent or an applicant already on file, then we don't need it, but anybody who's not listed on file, we do.
So I have a question with respect to the lot coverage.
Yes.
It's been adjusted to 50%.
Yes.
That's still 15% above what the bylaw requires. Are there any other examples that you could point to where lot coverage has been permitted or exists at 50%?
At 50%, I have not found, but 10% of that is just the rear deck. And that was included because it was, the length is over the allowable.
Perhaps you can also speak to variance number four on the bylaw 569 2013 about the south side front lot line setback.
Item number four? The front yard, sorry?
Yes, that you're seeking 1.10, 1.67?
Okay, so when the homeowners purchased the property in 2009, they did not know that the current front porch entry was not built without a building permit. What we are here requesting is to keep that existing front porch. It is current, that structure is currently built on the existing foundation, the stair foundation, which we are intending to keep and not demolish. So that's where the front yard setback is. We're just building right to the existing front porch enclosure, which we want to also renovate and update to bring it up to building code.
So just to clarify, so you are rebuilding the porch, but you're building it on existing foundation? Committee members, are there any other questions? Okay. Would you like to proceed to discussion or a motion?
I certainly had concern with the lot coverage when it was 59%. 50 still is above what's permitted. I do recognize that a lot of that is made up of the deck, but I'd be concerned if we were to consider it, that it be stipulated that that's what it was reflecting, not the building itself. My concern. There is, you know, permit parking, I believe. Whether or not there's any available, we haven't, we didn't hear that from the applicant, but there are side streets, and I think there might be sufficient parking to allow for that. That would be my comments.
I agree with some of the comments. Also, the planning report does talk about the front porch and that it can't be greater than one story, so I think that helps mitigate any future concerns of it being closed in and adding to any GFA. So I'm comfortable with what's being proposed. There is a two-story house at 951, which is also quite large, just only two doors down. So I don't feel that what's being proposed is in any way changing the character of the neighborhood, as it is in transition, and there are two-story homes there.
The only thing I would like to add, there's also an apartment building that's four-story across the street as well. So, and there's, as the agent mentioned, there's a parking lot adjacent to this house in terms of...
Commercial.
Impacts, yeah. Okay, so...
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move to approve the application as amended, meaning that variance number one... meaning that variance number one is amended to reflect 50% lot coverage, subject to the condition outlined in the planning report dated February 28, and subject to it being tied to the plans that have been filed with the committee, as I believe the application is appropriate and meets the character of the neighborhood.
Are you also including forest tree?
Oh, yes.
Number two and transportation?
Yes, yes.
Just.
No, just the.
We have a report with, it doesn't have plans attached, the planning report.
I was just concerned with the deck and the coverage, because the deck's included in the calculation of the coverage. That was my concern of wanting to reflect it in, could take any of the elevation drawings, I guess? Yes. Just the site plan is fine.
A, yeah, A 1.0, maybe, perhaps?
A 2.1 is fine.
A 1.0. It shows both decks.
Condition number two, and then the February 28th.
Right-of-way management report.
So, and no transportation, the right-of-way condition?
Yep. Sorry if that was longer. Planning condition? Planning condition about the port, front porch? Site plan? Forest tree condition and transportation. Condition.
Okay. So a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes, second by Mrs. Omen, and the motion is subject to the various conditions outlined. All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the application has been approved as amended. Okay, number four, 440 Kingswood Road. Okay, so the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have staff reports from community planning, right-of-way management, and tree protection plan review, as well as we have correspondence and support, no position from 438 Kingston, Kingswood Road, and 422 Kingswood Road. Okay, so if you can introduce yourself, your address.
Good morning, I'm Angela Stojanovich, I'm the agent for the 440 Kingswood Road. I just have some materials for you.
Okay. Yeah, is it possible to put on the overhead so everyone else can see?
Sure. I will just have to flip the pages.
Just at the top, I believe there isn't. Or maybe there's a button at the bottom, I'm sorry. Oh, it's working. If you can, are you gonna be flipping through a lot of pages? It's better to speak to the mic, because this is being recorded?
Okay, so we are requesting several variances, most of them setbacks, front yards, side yard setbacks, the landscaping, GFA or FSI, and ground floor height. Site yard setbacks are the existing condition. We're building a second-story addition on top of the existing bungalow. Also, the landscaping is pretty much existing condition. We're rebuilding the porch, but we're keeping the landscaping as it is. The only variance, that's not only, two new variances we're introducing is the ground floor height and the front yard setback. The thing about front yard setback is that it's measured to, we have feature walls on the side of the front porch, and the front yard setback is measured to those side walls. But the main house, the main front wall of the house is keeping where it is, the existing ground floor, exterior wall. So basically, the front yard setback is staying the same. We're just having those two slim walls protruding from the footprint of the house. As for the FSI, we did some research of the previous decisions in the area, and we have found that on the street, they, it's been approved up to 0.75, and in the neighborhood, on adjacent streets, it's been up to 1.05, which is much higher than we are asking for. The staff report.
If you can just, so you mentioned the average around 0.75 times on the street.
Yeah.
Correct? So if you can just give us some addresses in terms of.
Yes, of course.
Us having a reference point?
Absolutely. So, 1.05 in the neighborhood is 477 Scarborough Road. And the one on the street, that's 0.75, is, just one second. We have 0.79 on 475 Kingswood, and we have 0.75 on 322 Kingswood Road. For the landscaping, I also found a previous decision that supports variance that's on 313 Scarborough Road, and 58% of soft landscaping was approved instead of 75, which is required by bylaw.
And also, I have written down that it's an improvement to the existing condition. I believe it was.
Yes, the side yard setbacks are a little bit less than existing, because we're adding exterior insulation to the house, because existing walls are double-width brick walls, which have really low R-value, and the heat losses are tremendous. So we're trying to improve in energy efficiency of the house by adding exterior insulation, and also interior. That's why we have that little difference between existing side yard setbacks and the proposed, for the thickness of the insulation, basically.
Can you speak to the staff report regarding the height?
Yes. We're asking for height variance for the ground floor, because we are trying to raise the height of the basement. The current ceiling height in the basement is a little bit over six feet, which is not really usable. And we're asking for 1.47 meters for the ground floor height, which would give us about eight feet, eight-foot ceilings in the basement. We found by walking through the neighborhood that our house, even with the variance in height, wouldn't be so much different than neighboring houses, because grade there on the street is so different from house to house, that you can't really perceive the actual measured height of the ground floor compared to the average grade. Because average grade is measured at the front yard setback of the house, not at the street. So when you look at it from the street, you can see from the examples. I'll just flip through the pages. That other houses have much more steps leading to the front door than our proposed house. We have only seven steps, and some of the houses have 10, 9, even 12. As you can see from the examples here. We believe that even with the variances, the house will still be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and it will maintain the purpose of the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions, panel members? Okay, would you like to move to discussion or a motion? Yep.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I feel that the applicant has provided us with sufficient evidence to justify the variances required, specifically the height. I think that what's being proposed fits within the character of the neighborhood and meets the four tests. Therefore, I would move approval of this application, including forest tree condition number one.
So a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, second by Ms. Hayes, including forest tree condition number one. All in favor? Okay, the application has been approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Application number five, 550 Christie Street. So the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, six photographs of the area development. We also have a staff report for community planning, as well as correspondence and support from 540 Christie Street and 62 Tyrell Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself and your address.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Curtin, the agent for my client, Mary Pish, and the owner of the building.
Can I just first of all ask you if you're aware of the staff report?
Yes, and I wanted to address that right off the bat.
Okay, so we.
So the first thing I wanted to address is the error in the CVA circulation notice that was referenced in the planning report. The notice refers to a front yard setback variances only for the second floor and not the third floor. This is a result of the typo, a typo on the PPR prepared by the city zoning examiner. A week ago.
Which variance are you referring to specifically?
Oh gee.
In what we have before us?
It's the.
Like this, the notice of public hearing, not the zoning review?
Yes, so the notice of public.
I think it's variance number.
Hearing, oh gee. Do you have that, Mary?
Well, variance number six, the minimum required front yard setback?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yes, it speaks specifically to second floor, front main wall.
So we could go, the city planner noticed this and a new PPR was issued. I spoke to the zoning examiner the next day, and she informed me that her manager said that because the setback was listed on the second floor, the third floor was implied, and we could proceed with the hearing. Based on these comments, we are here today. If you're good with that, we'll proceed, otherwise we'll defer until it can be recirculated.
So panel members, would you like to discuss proceeding with this application versus deferral? How do you feel about proceeding? Or deferring this application?
Yes.
Did planning also not have some concerns with the wall height, also not just the?
Yes, but that's, you know, I will address that later on. I just wanna, I just wanna deal with whether we need to defer this first. And if you think we need to defer it, that's fine, we will, and we'll come back, and we'll ask the city to recirculate ASAP and come back here.
I would be inclined to go with the planning recommendation.
To defer the application? Okay. I also think it's fair in terms of the public, public interest and adjacent neighbors.
Us to avoid anything that gets approved that's gonna potentially miss some things.
And also, I'll give you the time to address some of the other planning concerns.
Yeah, we're fine with deferring, as long as it gets recirculated immediately, because it was a city error.
There's no confusion with.
Right, yeah, I get that, and that was my initial thing. But then, because the zoning person said, no, the manager's good, so we thought, okay, let's move.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So panel members, would you like to put forward a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move a motion to defer, based on the comments in the planning staff report of March the 1st, to allow the public notice to be accurate with respect to what is being requested, and subject to recirculation fees.
Okay, so a motion has moved to defer the application, moved by Ms. Hayes, second by Ms. Omen. All in favor?
Great, thank you very much.
The application has been deferred.
Thank you.
Item number six, 10 Castleview Avenue. So the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, as well as consent and minor variance decision affecting the subject property. And we have correspondence and opposition from 298 Spadina Road. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself, as well as your address.
Good morning, my name is Tay Rook, planner for the owners of the property at 10 Castleview Avenue. The variance before you today is to alter an existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a basement unit. The property itself, the proposal itself doesn't change any of the existing building envelope. The building envelope remains the same. All the changes are occurring inside and interior. And Castleview is a bit of a unique street. Castleview is a bit of a unique street. It's a very short street, and the property is highlighted in red near the, towards Spadina Road. All the properties that are highlighted in green are actually existing dwellings that have three units in them. So the majority of the houses on Castleview Road, Castleview Avenue, are three-unit dwellings. Once again, there is a variance related to GFA, but it's only related to the old existing bylaw. The new bylaw doesn't require this variance. And it's because the way in which GFA is defined and the way it's calculated in the old bylaw, it includes the basement in this particular instance. With regards to the parking itself, there's two existing parking spaces, a third is required, but there is on-street parking that is available. In addition to that, these are gonna be rent, this is a rental unit, and there's no guarantee that the tenant may or may not have a car. The area is well-served by public transit. There's bus routes on Spadina Road. There's also Davenport Station just to the south, probably about 600-meter walk or five-minute walk from the subject site itself. There is no comments from planning staff or any of the departments indicating there's any issues. I did not see the correspondence from the 298 Spadina, but in terms of impact associated with one additional unit within an existing envelope, I would suggest to the committee that this is very minor. It's very appropriate, given the context of the street. And in addition to that, the impacts associated with one parking space on Castleview Avenue, whether it be on-street parking, is minimal at best.
So, sorry, just to clarify, so the property is, so all properties on that part of the street are three units? Is that what your map is showing us?
Yes, the ones that are highlighted in green, the majority of them. So pretty much all of them, with the exception of, I would say, three, three, four properties? So Castleview, 10 Castleview, immediately adjacent to it, the attached unit or dwelling is a three-unit dwelling. And everything beyond that on the north side is three-unit dwellings. And on the south side, from our site onwards, towards Walmer, is, towards the west, is also three units. And then you also see that on Walmer and Austin there, that three of the, three of the lots are also three-unit dwellings. It's a bit of a unique situation, because everything else north, south of it is single-detached or semi-detached, large homes, large lots. But this particular segment of this area has these three units and have these rental units and apartment dwellings.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions?
No.
Any discussion? Would you like to move forward a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I feel that the applicant has provided us with sufficient evidence and shown us what's existing in the area. These are, in fact, very large homes, and a lot of them have been split up into different apartments. So I think that what's being proposed meets, fits within the character of the neighborhood, and there are no exterior changes, and the variances are indeed minor, therefore I would move approval.
Okay. Okay, so a motion has been moved to approve the variance application by Ms. Omen, second by Ms. Hayes. All in favor? Okay, so the application has been approved.
Thank you.
Number seven, 794 Coxwell Avenue. So the committee has before us plan of survey, revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a covering letter, as well as we have correspondence and support from 783 Coxwell, and six signature petitions support, mostly from people on Coxwell and Springdale. We also have a staff report from right-of-way management. If you can just introduce yourself.
My name is Tyrell Wong, I am the agent for the applicant. Yes, so the project is basically to do all the work inside, and the idea being to, it's an existing house that has a really unique condition where originally it was owned and built by a doctor, so it has two entrances already, one on Coxwell and one on the side street, which is currently their main entrance into the house. So we're just sort of, by turning the garage into some living space, allowing the owners of the house to have access to the beautiful garden that they have at the back. And the other condition I think is, they mention on this that there's a deck on the second floor, but that's an existing condition, so I wanted to make sure that was noted. The garage currently is pretty small, and they currently park outside and have a legal parking spot in front. And we did go check with the local town, City Hall to find out that they could, if they wanted to, get a second permit. Currently, they don't need one, currently the basement apartment is going to be used by their daughter, so at the, maybe in the future if they decide to, you know, rent it outside a family member, that they might do that. But we just wanted to make sure everything was basically taken care of at the Committee of Adjustment hearing.
And have you seen the right-of-way February 28th report?
No, I did not see the right-of-way, what was the report on that one?
Okay, so it speaks, I can give it to you. It speaks to the fact that the, the private driveway to the garage should be converted, is now rendered obsolete because of the conversion of the garage to habitable space, so the driveway should be removed and restored to green space.
Oh, so they're not, the idea is to take away any parking space that they have?
As well as the sidewalk, and the sidewalk should be restored to full face curb, and the costs need to be covered by the property owner.
Well, the property owners are here, so I can forward that information to them. Are you okay with that? They're fine with that.
Okay. It also speaks that the owner is also required to resurface the licensed boulevard using semipermeable paving material.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm a proponent of that, I have a green driveway.
Okay. Panel members, do you have any questions?
No.
Any discussion, a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move a motion to approve the application subject to the condition outlined in the February 28th Transportation Services Report, as I believe the application is appropriate and meets the four tests under the Planning Act.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been moved to approve the variance application by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Ms. Omen, including a transportation condition. All in favor? The application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Number eight, 11 Little York Road. So the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, and there are no staff reports or correspondence. So if you can introduce yourself.
Yeah, I am Alexandra Racher, I'm the applicant for 11 Little York Road, and I have the homeowner here as well.
Maybe if you can speak to variance condition number two in terms of the lack of soft landscaping.
I have a picture here.
Sorry.
Cecil, Cecil?
Okay.
So you can see that it backs onto an alley lane, and most of the houses that back onto there do not have the soft landscaping requirement. Some of them are actually parking spaces in the back, but the decks themselves all, all go out to the same size, so there is, it doesn't change from one house to the next, they all seem to have no soft landscaping in the rear.
Are there any similar approvals on that street or in that subdivision, in terms of CFA approvals?
Cecil, the San 11 Little York Road, not that, we did not research that.
This, the one behind you, with the double?
Oh, yeah, there is two units on the same street that have a double car garage elevated. So they have a deck that's similar, they have parking underneath, and the deck is second-tiered. And there's no...
And there was no CFA approval for that, just...
There was.
Oh, there was, okay.
There was, it was for two, on the same.
Okay. Panel members, any other questions?
So those properties on either side, did they have approval of the committee, or were they just built?
I have no, I don't know. I spoke to the people that got approval for the second-tiered, because they removed their soft landscaping altogether, tarred it, put a deck tiered, so they could park underneath.
So of the, of the number of properties on that row, on the side of the street you're on, how many of them have decks similar to what you're proposing? Or how many properties are there, and how many have decks already? As you were suggesting, it's quite common, I just wanted to know.
Yes.
Just more than your neighbors?
Here.
One, two, three, so that's four, so that picture shows...
There's four in a row.
That's four in a row there.
And then beyond that, the next two are parking?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion, a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I feel that what's reasonable, or that what's being proposed is reasonable, from what I could see, there are several decks that exist there already. In terms of overlook, it's overlooking the street as well as the rear of the other set of semis that are behind these. And so I think what's being proposed is reasonable, meets the four tests, and it's within the context of what's in that little enclave of townhomes, so I would move approval of the application.
Okay, a motion has been moved by Ms. Omen to approve the variance application, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? Okay, the application has been approved.
Thank you, committee.
So number nine is being held, number 10, 77 Muriel Avenue. Sorry? Yeah, it's still, sorry, it's being held, so we're dealing with uncontested items. So number 10, 77 Muriel Avenue. So the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have reports from community planning, as well as right-of-way management. So if you can please introduce yourself, your address.
My name is Alvin Tang, I'm the agent for the owner, address is 77 Muriel Avenue.
Okay, committee members, would you like a presentation, or would you like to go directly into questions?
Perhaps questions?
Okay.
Can I ask you to speak to the lot coverage?
The lot coverage? I do have a few examples of other properties that have higher lot coverage.
Okay.
Do you want me to show it to you guys?
Sure. If, is it a package of just approvals, or?
Yeah, just approvals.
Okay, sure, you can bring them forward, I guess. Unless you want to just go through them?
Are they close by, can, like, within...
They're in the same ward.
Sorry?
They're in the same ward.
We're looking in the same...
Neighborhood?
Oh, the same neighborhood.
Same street?
They're close by, they're not on the same street, though.
Do you have a map that would show us where they are?
I don't have a map prepared right now.
So is there anything on Muriel Avenue?
With regards to the maximum permitted floor space index?
The lot coverage.
The lot coverage.
I mean, I think you can also speak to the FSI, because you are seeking 1.0.
Do you have any examples of lot coverage on Old Witch, or Eaton, or South Kirk?
I have one on Woodycrest. That one...
What number, Woodycrest?
Woodycrest, 195 Woodycrest. And that one had a lot coverage of 55%.
So maybe perhaps you can, you can speak to the reason why you're seeking such a large lot coverage?
Do you know, I, based on the existing homes that are on the street, I, I don't have the Committee of Adjustment application, but if you actually look on the street, there are other homes, well, the one, actually my neighbor beside me, they have an extension which I'm trying to create, which is the same.
Is this the semi, the other semi-party wall neighbor?
No, it's the one beside, so the one next door, but that's not attached. We're just trying to...
The one south?
The one south, that's correct, yes.
And they also have a two-story addition?
They do, yeah.
How about any other houses on that, on your side of the street?
There were a lot of houses that have the extension, but I didn't see nothing on the Committee of Adjustments applications. But I do see a lot have the two-story additions.
I did notice there are a lot of additions, some that are longer. How's yours going to compare to the existing additions in that block? How far back?
How far back? Based on, based on what I'm proposing, it's, it looks like it's less than some of the other ones that are existing there. There was a note that was sent out on February 28th. The building length is actually 16.19 meters, which is less than what I'm requesting, which, which I was originally asking for 18.89, but that was including the porch area. So if you exclude the porch and just the front of the house to the back of the house, it's only 16.19 meters, which is less than the maximum permitted building length of 70 meters.
Okay. And do you know what's the existing FSI, because I couldn't find the site statistics for?
Sorry?
The existing floor space index?
The existing floor space index, so there are three properties that I found on, on the same street.
And I mean your, your property?
Oh, on this property. The property here is 1.03 times the area of the lot.
That's what you're asking for, do you know what it is currently?
Oh, currently? Currently, I'm not sure.
Is it more than 0.75, do you think?
It's possible.
But you're not...
I'm not exactly sure, I have to do the calculations.
The next time will be really important to have site statistics, so we can compare the existing condition to what's proposed. Okay, panel members, do we have any other questions? Discussion?
Based on what I, I could see, it's, there are a lot of additions, so it doesn't appear...
Very dense.
It's very dense, it doesn't really appear to be something that's totally out of context of what's there. We do have the planning report that's asking the building length to be limited to 16.19, and they don't speak to any other concerns in the planning report. And again, from what I can see, what's being asked for fits within the context of the neighborhood as it is today.
Yeah, there is that property, I think it's immediately south, it's a new build, that's quite a large property.
Uh, sorry? Hayes, if you can, please speak up.
Sorry, my mic's on, sorry, I'll, yeah, I'll be louder. There is a property immediately adjacent, which is a, a new build, is quite a large property. I think it's a very densely developed street, and I, I don't think what's being, although the lot coverage is certainly high, I don't think it would result in something out of character for that street. And I agree that planning hasn't noted it as a concern.
One thing I wanted to clarify, because I think the agent mentioned that the building length is 16.91 meters?
16.19 is what the planning report states.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Not including the front porch.
Not including the front porch.
Do we have a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I would move to approve the application, subject to the, the condition outlined in the staff report dated February 28th, as I believe the application meets the character of the, the specific street, and meets the four tests under the Act.
I'll second.
So a motion has been moved to approve the variance application, including the planning report condition dated February 28th, moved by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Ms. Omen, all in favor? And the only thing to note is that Transportation, their report, they also highlighted that the new owner has to submit a transfer application with off-street parking.
Okay, sure.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
The application has been approved.
Thank you so much.
So number 11, 130 Sunnyside Avenue. So the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, so Madam Secretary Torres can leave, because she has a conflict. In terms of reports, we have a community planning report. So if you can please introduce yourself and your address.
Bridget Burke List, owner, 130 Sunnyside Avenue. We're requesting a partial third-floor addition, adding, basically squaring off the back of our current third floor and adding about 1.3 meters to it.
Okay.
So it's just on the back. And we have, we've talked to all our neighbors, front, our side neighbors and the people in the back, and no one had any objections.
Do you have support letters?
No.
From them? So next time will be important to have support letters. And then are you aware of the planning report dated February 28th?
Yeah, that they, not to go beyond the six-point, they requested it's 6.63 meters, but 5.33 is already there.
Okay.
We're limited by a skylight, and I won't lose my skylight.
Panel members, do you have any other questions?
No.
No, okay, is there...
Through you, Madam Chair, again, there are a lot of additions that are quite long on, on other houses.
Oh yeah, ours wouldn't be...
Uh, sorry, we're ready in.
What's being proposed is, in my opinion, meets the four tests, and it's not out of character with what's there, therefore I would move approval of the application, including the condition in the February 28th planning report.
Okay. So a motion has been moved by Ms. Omen to approve the variance application, including the condition, the planning report, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? Okay, the application has been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, number 12, 254 Shaw Street. So the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a staff report from community planning, we have correspondence and support from 252 Shaw Street, as well as five form letters in support from Dundas Street, Crawford Shaw Street.
Yes.
If you have your name and address.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name's Gabriel Fasson, we're at a design, I'm the agent for the owner. And what we're requesting is, the house is currently under renovation, and we're requesting revisions to our renovation. We're requesting an extension or a slight addition to...
Thank you.
Slight addition to the first floor, roughly about five square meters, and an addition to the third floor of roughly about 20, about 18 square meters. And the addition of a gar, a garage in the back. There is an existing pad, and the garage would essentially be built on top of the existing pad. We did read the staff report, and with the condition of limiting the length, and we're absolutely fine with that. And also the addition of partitions, privacy screens, which we absolutely would be fine with that. I think that's one of the conditions that we've already agreed to with the neighbors, just sides of the property.
Okay.
Could you just briefly speak to the soft landscaping? Could you just briefly speak to the soft landscaping?
The soft landscaping? Uh, we're a little limited to, um, because of the existing parking pad that was purchased, when the house was purchased, it was an existing parking pad. Um, it should note that the house originally was 20.21 meters long, and, uh, a rear extension was also demolished. And, um, so, uh, currently, um, we possibly could increase the soft landscaping to about 30 meters by making the pathway a little bit smaller. We've also decreased, uh, from the original, um, the original, uh, plans, we've decreased the length that, the width of the stairs and are trying to increase the, the soft landscaping.
Okay, so just, uh, just before I move on, so are you planning to amend variance number four to 30 meters squared?
We could possibly do 30 meters squared.
That's, that's about 25...
About 25%, yes.
Yeah. Um, sorry, Madam Secretary Treasure? Are there other variances that are changing to make that happen?
Um, we, we're, um, I think the house has actually been shortened again by another two feet, so the actual length is actually 18.47.
Uh, would you like to change that as well?
It's, yes, we could change that as well.
Okay, to, sorry, to 18...
18.47 meters.
47 meters, so that's variance number two.
Mm-hmm.
Under bylaw 569, 2013, is there a...
Did you say 18.447?
Uh, 18.447, is there a length on the old bylaw? Okay, so, um, so we're revising variance number two.
Mm-hmm.
It's the depth, though.
That's the depth, yes.
Uh, to 18.47.
18.47.
Uh, you know that depth is calculated from the front, okay?
From the front of the house. In this particular condition, it's not the lot line, it's the front of the house, yes.
Really? I thought it was the front yard setback, the depth of...
Um, in this condition, it's, uh, from the front wall to the back in, in this application.
Okay. Um, Madam Secretary Treasure, um, my understanding was the depth is calculated from the front yard setback, yeah. So I'm afraid that the agent's speaking of the length of the house.
Uh, in this, uh, in this zoning, I, I just reviewed the zoning last night, and in this zoning, it's from the front of the house.
Okay, as long as you're confident with that?
Yes, we're confident that will...
Okay, so 18.47 for the depth, and then 25%, 30 meters squared for the soft landscaping. Is there any other changes that, this one? Okay, um, committee members, do we have any other questions?
I have, I have one more request.
Sure.
Um, we did, uh, propose a green roof on the garage, and, uh, there's been some concerns about possibly being a, uh, a rodent haven, so especially because our, our, it's, it is an alleyway with, uh, commercial property in the back, so there's not a lot of, uh, green space, so, um, we're concerned about, uh, perhaps eliminating the green roof on the garage. Just do also two trees in the area and saplings that would...
Not in the application.
Yeah, I'm so...
It's not, it's just in the...
It's not gonna impact.
Um, just another question, the, um, the revision on the, the depth, is that gonna change GFA at all, or is it gonna change any other variance?
Slightly, it might bring the GFA down one or two square meters.
Okay, we'll leave it then.
Well, yeah, we'll leave it as is. Okay, um, okay, panel members, do we have any other questions?
Number two.
A motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the application as amended, meaning, um, variance number two being amended to 18.47 meters, and variance number four being amended to 25% and 30 square meters, uh, subject to the condition in the staff report dated February 28th, 2018, as I believe that the application...
Uh, sorry, there's also...
...and forestry condition number one, as I believe the application is appropriate, meets the character of the area, and satisfies the criteria under the Planning Act.
Okay, so, yeah, so the application, uh, sorry, a motion has been moved to, to approve the revised, um, variance application by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Ms. Omen, all in favor? Okay, the application has been approved.
Thank you.
Um, for number 13, 558 Concord Avenue, is the agent here or the applicant? Yep? Uh, no? Oh, you are here, sorry. Okay, if you can please come forward. Um, are there any interested parties for this item? Okay, uh, so yes, if you can please come forward, uh, 558 Concord Avenue. Okay, so the committee in front of us has a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have two form letters of support by, uh, from 560 and 556, uh, Concord Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself, um...
My name is Michael Bateman. I'm the, uh, agent for the owners of this property. Uh, we requesting an increase of the GFA, uh, to 0.82. Uh, there is no increase to the footprint of a building, there's no increase to the height of, there's no, uh, we're not going over the existing height of the building, so it's only a third-floor addition. The house is by no means a very big house, it's, uh, with the addition, it's going to be about 200 square meters, which is about 2,200, uh, square feet. Uh, the owner's, uh, trying to put together, uh, a master bedroom with a en suite and a walk-in closet. It's impossible to do it on the second floor, we have three kids, and, uh, the existing bedrooms are just too small to accommodate an, uh, an en suite, uh, in, for the master bedroom. So basically, they're trying to do an addition. As I, as was mentioned, there's a support from both sides, uh, from the north and from the south neighbor. You do not object to this addition.
Okay, just to clarify, you're seeking eight, uh, 0.81 times, right?
Uh, I believe it's 0.82, it doesn't say.
Notices.
It says 81, yeah, okay.
0.81 then?
Yes.
Okay, that's correct, okay. Um, panel members, any questions? Discussion, motion?
Um, through you, Madam Chair, I feel this is indeed a minor application, um, meets the four tests, therefore I'd move approval of the application.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion has been moved by Ms. Omen to approve the variance application, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? The application has been approved.
Okay, thank you.
So number 14 was rescheduled, number 15, uh, 356 Bay Street. So the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a covering letter from Anthony Greenberg, um, who's the agent, and then we have no correspondence. So if you can please introduce yourself.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Anthony Greenberg. I'm a registered professional planner with SVA and Architects and Planners, and the agent, uh, for the owner of the property. Uh, so the variances, uh, that are being requested today are in order to permit interior renovations to the basement, uh, ground level and mezzanine of a 13-story office building. Part of the renovations, there'll be 162.75 square meter increase to the mezzanine area. It's completely enclosed within the building. Uh, however, the building, even though it's currently within the height and total FSI limits under both the bylaws which apply to the property, uh, it's a lawfully existing building which was constructed in the 1960s, and its non-residential FSI, uh, is currently in exceedance of what's permitted. And the way lawfully existing buildings are dealt with in both the former and current bylaw, that is, whatever the existing non-conforming item is, remain, um, is what's permitted until there's a addition, in which case permission must be granted. So we are seeking variances for non-residential FSI in the new bylaw, and both total and non-residential and former.
But currently, the building is all commercial?
All commercial, and it will remain all commercial. And I'm, I'm happy to show you the addition, or, uh, provide my demonstration of how I believe the application is minor, if you wish, or answer any questions.
I think we're okay to proceed to questions. My only question is that in your cover letter, you, um, highlighted an FSI of 12.08 versus you're seeking, uh, based on the public notice, 11.64 times?
Yeah, so when we submitted the initial application, it was based on a waiver, and through the zoning examiner's review, uh, they interpreted the calculation of GFA differently, and we're deferring to the zoning examiner's review, which is, has since updated the public notice.
Okay, so you're sticking to the 11.64 then?
Uh, we're, we're sticking to what is on the public hearing notice, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, 11.64.
Okay, panel members? Um, discussion, uh, motion?
Um, through you, Madam Chair, um, this is the downtown core. Um, the existing commercial FSI exceeds the bylaws as it is, and I, I think what's being proposed, uh, isn't going to change the look of 365 Bay or the surrounding areas. I, I feel that it, it meets the four tests and fits within the context of what's in the downtown core. So I would move approval of the application.
Second?
A motion has been moved by Ms. Omen to approve, uh, the variance application, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
The application has been approved.
Thanks.
Okay, number 16, uh, which is being held. Uh, so number 17 has been deferred, number 18, 308 Simington Avenue. Okay, so for 308, uh, we have in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and then we have correspondence in opposition from 302 Simington Avenue. So if you can please introduce yourself and your address.
My name's Maria DeNegri. I'm the agent for 308 Simington. I also have with me here one of the owners of the property. Um, do you want me to give you her name?
Um, panel members, would you, yeah, so let's say yes.
My name is Ann Dickens.
Okay, uh, panel members, would you like a presentation or proceed to questions?
I think they've just questions.
Um, okay, so, uh, we'll proceed with just questions, Ms. Hayes.
What is the existing FSI on the building?
The existing, um, the FAR, like the floor area?
Yes, yes.
It's a, it's a pretty small, two-story house right now that currently sits at about .6.
So you're asking for 1.03. Can you point to any others in the area that have similar floor space indexes to what you're requesting?
Um, I cannot, I have not done the research to get specific areas, but I do have a figure ground of the, uh, around, the surrounding area that was also part of your location map, that does show, um, that there are considerably larger houses that are three stories in height and, and would kind of, you know, start to approximate the area.
I can... Which, are you speaking to this, or? How about in terms of the building depth? So the existing is 13.5 meters, and then you're going to 16.5?
We're, um, we're asking for 16.5. Um, because we have, um, altered the house, it has, the old zoning, um, bylaw turns that into a converted residence and, um, reduces the building, um, the depth to, uh, 14 meters. Um, at 16.5, we would, um, be within the 17-meter allowance, but we are, so, we are, so a lot of the variances, uh, are because we are seeking to put a secondary unit, um, in the space.
And so where is the secondary unit going to?
So the secondary unit is in, going to go in the third floor.
Okay.
So the existing basement is got a floor height, a ceiling height of six, um, meter, six feet, four inches. Um, the, we've done some preliminary cost analysis, and the cost of underpinning was considerable. So the design decision was to move forward by adding a third floor. We are well within the allowable height, um, allowances, both in building height and main walls. Um, so one thing to note is that the letter of opposition that was submitted, um, the owner at 302 Simington had no problems with the extension. He felt it was within reason, every, there's a lot of houses that are, have extended on the back. He also liked the look of the house in the front. What we've done is, by raising the, uh, floor, we've gone from a hipped roof to a pitched roof, so we're not proposing a three-story flat-roof house. Um, and what he was concerned was about height, but height isn't on the table here. So I think, um, it's, the, um, the shift in area is because I'm putting the secondary suite on the third floor, then all of a sudden that third floor gets completely counted, as opposed to putting it on the basement and then not counting the GFA.
And in terms of the local neighborhood, are there any other three-story houses?
Yes, there's, there are several three-story houses in the area. I have, um, I can put a render that we did, um, that shows you a view down Simington. So our two adjacent neighbors are two-story hipped roofs, but right across the street, there are, um, three Victorians in a row that are three stories, and then if you go a little bit further down, three, four, five houses, there are three stories as well.
So if you can just give us a reference where 308 Simington Avenue is?
So 308 Simington is the dark, um, pitched that you see, um, with a bit of the frame. Across the street are, um, two Victorian, um, semis, and then if you continue to go down Simington, um, four doors down, there is additional three-story houses. There are three-story houses across the laneway, and then we are basically two houses in from what will actually be, uh, development on Dupont. Um, so there is, um, densification in the area, and, um, I, you know, even, I, even with, even though we are increasing in height, we're still under the, um, allowable.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, would you like to go into a discussion, or do you need more time? Okay, um...
Um, I visited this, visited the site and surrounding area, and I, I don't think what is being proposed is, is out of character with what is presently there. As is noted by the applicant, um, there is no variance before us for height, uh, which is the, uh, concern that was noted by the objector at, at 302. Um, if my colleague doesn't have any other questions, I'd be prepared to move a motion. So, um, through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to move a motion to approve the application, as I believe it is appropriate, uh, will meet the character of the area, and, uh, meets the, uh, tests under the Planning Act.
I'll say... Okay, so a motion to approve, uh, has been moved by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Ms. Omen, all in favor? Okay, the application has been approved. Uh, so we're gonna take a five-minute...
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the contested items. It's a 49, right?
That's a 16.
Okay, so we're going to proceed with item number nine, 26 Governor's Road. So if we can have both the agent, applicant, as well as the parties interested or contesting this application. So for the individuals who are contesting this application, you can, if you can please sit right here on my left. That's correct, yeah. And if, if you would like to elect a spokesperson, sorry? That would be great. Okay, so just one second, let me just read what's on file. Yeah, we don't need the property owners. So we have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have email correspondence from two planners and we have a staff report from Ravine Natural Feature Protection. We have correspondence in support from nine Governor's Road and 15 Governor's Road. We have correspondence in concern from 29 Governor's Road as well as eight and 69 Douglas Crescent. And then we have number of letters of opposition, mostly from Governors as well as Douglas Crescent.
Correct, when you said 15 Governor's Road was a letter of support?
That's correct.
That's not correct. It was revised opposition.
Okay, that's.
Revised or removed certain objections based on their revised plans, but there were still objections remaining.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so if we can, okay, so if we can please have your name? And maybe if you can give us a five-minute presentation of the, of the application since we have parties contesting it.
Sure. Good morning, Committee. My name is Roy Vance. I'm from Plut Living Studio. We're acting as agent on behalf of the owners of 26 Governor's Road. We, we have since last Wednesday met with the concerned residents. Jeff was kind enough to host a meeting where we, we heard all the concerns from the original plans. And since Wednesday, right up until yesterday morning, we've made a number of revisions of the plans. And after speaking to the application technician responsible for this file, he suggested that we, we present based on the revisions. So I've got copies of, of the original hearing notice at his recommendation with the revisions highlighted in red and a number, there's, there's six variances that we're, we're eliminating from the original 20.
Okay, if you can, so how many other variances are you changing beyond the six removal?
There's 10 variances that are, that we've all reduced except for setbacks which have been increased.
And then six are removed, so? And have the contesting parties been informed?
They were only given the plans yesterday and in all fairness, it was given to Jeff who represents the, the neighborhood.
Okay, so panel members, this, this could be considered a substantial change to the application. Panel members, what do you think in terms of moving forward, deferral?
Well, we, we have a, a planning report that's recommending deferral and I, I would be inclined to kind of go with that, especially with all these revisions that are going to basically change everything that we have before us. I think it gives the residents an opportunity to have a closer look and, and it gives planning an opportunity to have a look at it as well, which could change their position if, if and when, you know, it comes back.
Ms. Omen? Uh, Ms. Hayes, sorry.
I would agree.
Okay, I, I agree as well. So Ms. Emotion?
So I, I would move a motion to defer this application so that these new plans can be submitted with all the revisions and it can be recirculated and it will give residents an opportunity to have a look at it.
I second that.
Okay, so a motion to defer has been moved by Ms. Omen, seconded by Ms. Hayes, including the recirculation fees. And then coming back to this panel as soon as you're ready. I apologize for having to wait throughout the entire hearing to hear you now.
Just a quick question. In terms of the deferral, do we, are we then subject to the next available committee of adjustment hearing?
The sooner you come back with the material, the, the staff would make every effort to.
Through you, Madam Chair, yeah. It's a maximum three months because we don't want them hanging around longer than three months. But it's also you're subject to whatever date we can actually fit you on and the dates are getting further and further into the future.
Yeah, we looked at the schedule yesterday, it's mid-August for the next hearing.
But we have a overflow of applications that are deferred because they're not, committee's not able to make decisions on them and so you're going to the bottom of that pile, which is quite extensive.
Okay.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good to see you.
If, if we can, sorry, for the contesting parties, if you can please submit a decision request card with your contact information, that would be great. Request card, which are located at the end of the horseshoe and if you can just submit them to the city staff as well as Madam Secretary.
One of the group or one?
Um.
One of the group, I just want to report to the, to the president.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and then we'll move forward with item number 16, 105 Hudson Drive. So if we can please have the agent, applicant, as well as the contesting parties. The committee has in front of us a plan of survey, sorry, if we can please have silence because we're still proceeding with the hearing, that would be great. Thank you. So the committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a decision affecting the subject property, as well as we have email correspondence from the Toronto Region Conservation Authority and Ravine and Natural Feature Protection. And then we have correspondence in opposition from 238 Rose Park Drive as well as 103 Hudson Drive. Okay, so if you can please introduce yourself.
I will. Excuse me. Last minute negotiations. I'm Peter Higgins of Peter Higgins Architect Incorporated. I have on my right the neighbor to the immediate east, Mr. David Bruce, and Jeremy Gowen from the Moore Park Residents Association. We have been huddling for the last hour or so to try to reach an agreement and I'm happy to say that we have. I have all these handouts, which I think, if you don't mind, may I approach and hand them out?
Okay. Is there any way to put them on the projector or?
I don't have an assistant with me, so.
Okay.
Well, I have, I've got them. I hate.
You know, it's, I think it's fine since there are many public members here, as long as the contesting parties get a copy as well, we can share one if, oh, you have extra.
Thank you.
And also if you can share with the neighbors.
These revised plans?
No, these are the plans that I'm going to submit, the revised plan, very simple.
Which variance are you going to be changing or?
I will, I will get to that if I may in just a moment. I think I've handed out all my.
Also the.
There's been some new information to clarify. This was part of my submission, but I believe now we're, we're at a point where we've removed a variance and made a slight change. So Jeremy, maybe what you can do is just show what we've agreed to here. We've been dealing for the past year and a half with not only the neighbor but also the Toronto Region Conservation Authority, Ravine and Natural Features. We've had them out to the site pending a final approval of the legitimacy of the structure that is below the present deck, which we believe we have now, to ensure that the deck won't slide into the ravine. It's been there for seven or eight years, as I understand. We will have final approval and permit from the TRCA. What is before you is what we've just agreed to, which is in order to help with the neighbor's concern about overlook, privacy, et cetera, mass, mostly due to, if I can point to it here, their side window that they have here, which looks directly across at the shed here, and an angled view from their rear windows as well as this corner window outwards. We are proposing, in fact, it was the neighbor posted, to cut back the corner of this deck, four-foot by four-foot corner, to open up their view corridor to the ravine, minimize the amassing along here, to relocate a trellis and redo a roof over a barbecue in this, somewhere in this area we haven't figured it out yet, and to shift the existing deck, so the deck, not the deck, the shed. The shed that is presently here would be shifted southwards along the property line so that we would have no height variance, we would have no encroachment, because there is an argument as to the encroachment, the, the encroachment might be an inch on the wall, but it's certainly the existing eaves encroach on the neighbor's property. So we would eliminate that, it's not a, a variance here, in return for the understanding and support of the neighbor. This was, in my estimation, a, an innocent move by my client who decided to put a deck in to replace his damaged terrace after the addition was done, 2011 approximately. He followed almost exactly the outline of the terrace, which is shown on the dotted lines. The thick dotted lines that you have on your drawing 84 are slightly dotted here. As I say, we, we seem to have approval from Ravine and TRCA. So the concern from the neighbor to the east, Mr. Bruce and his partner, was, and I was in their family room looking at the shed of my client, was that the shed was somewhat overpowering, particularly when you were in their backyard, because their basement walkout was much lower than our topographic elevation, so the shed did seem high, I admit that. With the shed being pushed back, most of it is, well, not most, half of it is covered by the, the neighbor's garage, which has no windows in it. Neighbor's garage is this, this corner here.
Okay, so in terms of the variances, are there going to be any changes to the variances that you're seeking?
We would not have the variance of the height, number four, under the 86 bylaw, where we had a 4.53. That variance was solely because of the location of the topography. The shed itself did not encroach or beyond the allowable height, so we'd be eliminating number four.
How about in terms of the, the east side lot line setback?
No, we would maintain that. It's an existing deck. The, the bylaw, the original bylaw, 86, save and except for the exact area where we're going to cut it back, and it's funny how this has come up, but in your documents, we had an area, I'm sorry, I've given you all my copies.
Here, do you want this?
Just a quick overview. If you go to the second page, it's a colored landscape plan, which shows the existing shed in gray, the terrace in brown, and in tan, we have the areas that are over the existing allowable length of 17 meters. So the area in question is actually not at variance. If you go to the very next one, which is A2, it shows it better. There's a tan triangular area there, which is the area which is kind of in question at this point. It's the only area of the deck that has a height above the existing adjacent grade of greater than 1.2 meters. It's at 1.4 meters. And that may be probably best illustrated if I can ask you to go to A5 and A6. A5 has a small shaded area to the right lower that says section of deck above 1.2 and it's showing there as 1.4. And then if you go to the next page, so that's the side elevation that Mr. Bruce would be looking at. The side elevation, the rear elevation, excuse me, is A6. So if we look on the left-hand side of the, the drawing, we see again the deck there at 1.4 meters, but in other locations, we're at 1.2, we're at .94 towards the middle and we're at 1.031. So it's only this corner that is the variance. And my argument was going to be that the way the bylaw reads is this is being called a, a building or a structure because it's attached to the present house and a portion of it, as it states in the zoning review, because of portions, so to speak, of the deck are above 1.2, they have to call the whole thing a structure. We've actually now eliminated that. So we would be allowed to have a zero setback from the 86 bylaw. So we're here somewhat cap in hand to say it's an existing deck, we would like it approved. My client did this on his own without me. I was the architect for the addition. He should have known better and admits that. Mr. Bruce moved in, his lawyer caught the, the transgression, so to speak, in finding out that there was no permit.
Okay, so, so there's going to be a private agreement between the owner and Mr.
There is a private agreement based on that drawing that's been submitted to you today. Sorry, I didn't date it. I will if you'd like. Oh, I haven't submitted it yet. So today's date is March 7th, 18. So today's date is March 7, 18 PJH. Would you like to just initial it?
Okay.
I'm just going to take a photograph of it because we're sharing it with the neighbors so that it's clear that what we have stated here, we will do with your permission, we hope.
So just to be, just so that we're clear, from the requested variances perspective, the only variance that's being removed is variance number four to 43886. All the other variances being requested remain required.
Correct.
However, an agreement between yourselves and the objectors has resulted in...
In withdrawing their objection.
Shifting of the shed and a carving off of a couple of corners of the deck.
Yes.
But the variances are still necessary.
And he is, they're necessary for the existing structure?
You have a plan that you're going to file with us today
Correct.
That's showing those adjustments to the plan.
Correct. It's stating there, "Shift existing shed, remove height variance, no encroachment over mutual property line."
Both through you, Madam Chair. Because of that plan, variance four was needed.
Removed.
So you could tie it to that drawing?
So drawing A4, okay, submitted today.
We're happy to have you do that.
Okay, and then maybe if we can hear from the concerned parties, how do you feel about this agreement?
I'm here because...
Sorry, if you can just say your name.
David Bruce. I live next door at 103 Hudson Drive.
Okay.
And I'm here today because I was concerned about what has happened or what is being built without a permit. But I feel this is a reasonable solution.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy Gowan from the Moore Park Residents Association. We've been together. We are not going to object if Mr. Bruce is comfortable with the situation.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, committee members, would you like to ask any final questions, discussion, a motion?
We do have a letter of, no objection from the other neighbor.
Okay, so if you want, you can submit that.
Yes, did I ask the question?
Okay, panel members?
I think there's enough discussion. I'm prepared to move a motion.
Okay, Ms. Hayes?
Okay. So further to, upon hearing the comments from the applicant's agent and the discussion amongst the parties, I am prepared to move a motion to approve the application with the deletion of variance number four to bylaw 53886, and that the approval be tied to marked-up drawing A4 received by the committee today.
And also TRCA?
And TRCA.
Sorry.
No, there says same place. There was no objection.
They have no objection.
That's correct.
No objection.
And our doesn't either.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be my motion.
Okay, so a motion?
They had requested of... I thought there was something related to any private trees permit?
Says, based on our comments above, we have no objections to the approval.
Right. Isn't there a...
Okay. Okay. So a motion was moved by Ms. Hayes to approve the amended application, second by Ms. Omen. All in favor? So the application, amended application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are adjourned? At 11:22.
So the committee will adjourn for lunch? All stands in recess?
You don't have any...
Yeah.
Just turn your microphone.
Oops.
Oops.
I didn't know if I was turning. But...
...